Well, thank you, everyone, for being out here. I'm Scott Wadel. I'm the Planning Director. And so we've got a whole team of folks who have been putting this together. So thanks so much for coming out. We're real excited to get your feedback. We've got four presenters that we're going to present on the existing regulations and the existing comprehensive plan. We're going to talk a little, just a little bit about those dynamics, and then we're going to turn it over to you all for questions and for comments. Couple points that I want to make real quick, and we'll see this as we go through, but I just want to emphasize this. The first thing is that tonight, we're here to talk about utility and commercial scale solar. So this is about, this is not about solar that would go on a house or something that is associated with like a business. It's ancillary. We're really talking about utility and commercial scale. Okay? Just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. Second part that I want to emphasize is that this is not about a specific project. This is about the regulations and the guidance for the county overall. And then the third thing that I want to emphasize before we get started is that we want to be respectful of everyone's time. We really appreciate that everyone's out here. We're excited to get your feedback. Because there are so many folks here who are passionate about this, are curious about this, we're going to ask that speakers, please try and keep to three minutes per person. And the reason why is because if we have 20 people who want to speak at three minutes, that's going to put us at an hour. So we just want to be respectful of people's time, and if we go over that, I'm more than happy to stay here, and I will take comments. I'll answer questions, but at 7:00, we're going to ask staff to go ahead and start picking up the boards and everything, but that's what we're going to ask for the comments. So does that sound fair? Okay. And as always, you can always email us afterwards if there's more information that you want to share with us. Okay? All right. Should we kick it off? Okay. Well, let's do that. All right. So very good. So thank you again for being here. So we've got multiple opportunities for input, and please, as we're doing the presentation, feel free to continue walking around the boards, filling out comment cards. So we've got the stations. Feel free to fill out the sticky notes and put those on there. We've got the comment form. Has everyone seen those? Okay, little cards, white cards that you can write on. We've got a comment box in the middle. You can put those in. We'll do questions and comments after this presentation. And then, as always, we've got an online survey, so you can find it at cedriccounty.org/solar. Anyone taking the survey so far? Do you want to raise your hand? All right. Fantastic. It's up there. It's running. Thank you. All right. So tonight, we'll go through an overview. We'll talk about environmental subjects, and that will cover a whole host of things you can see up there. We'll talk about transportation. We'll talk about visuals and aesthetics, and then we'll turn it over again for questions and comments. So that's kind of the order that we're going to go in. All right. So the overview. I'll provide you with the overview here. So we've got two important documents that we're talking about tonight. The first is the comprehensive plan, which you can see there on the left, and the second one is the zoning code, which you can see there on the right. So the comprehensive plan, it's a guide. It's not the regulations, but it provides very important guidance for us in the decision-making process. So staff uses that when we make a recommendation on a particular case. Elected officials look to that for guidance as well, and appointed officials. Within the comprehensive plan, there's text that provides recommendations, and you can see that on one of the boards in the back. There's two boards on the comprehensive plan, recommendations related to utility and commercial scale solar and also wind. And then there's also the urban growth areas map, and this illustrates where communities in Cedric County anticipate growing in the future. Okay? Here's the pages from the comprehensive plan discussing wind, discussing solar, and again, we've got these up on a board in the back. In terms of the zoning codes, we're switching gears now. We're going from the comprehensive plan to the zoning code. So these are the regulations. These are what, these are what the land uses must comply with, and it also provides for a decision-making process. So what is the process by which we're going to consider a possible change in land use? We'll cover a little bit of that. So in the zoning code, there is a definition under utility major, you'll find, solar energy conversion system. And again, this is, I got to emphasize, this is not, this doesn't apply to ancillary solar, like solar, any of you familiar with the Mays High School, and they've got the solar array that's there? That use is ancillary to the school. It's, the solar is not the principal use. This is really talking about kind of utility and commercial scale where the solar is the principal use. Does that, does that make sense? Okay. So then, we've got a definition, and in the zoning code, we've got this handy-dandy table, and it will tell you in which zoning districts. You can see across the top, there are different zoning districts. You can see the definition of utility major. It's in here, at least the term. And you can see that in almost every zoning district across the board, it's a conditional use. So if you want to do utility or commercial scale solar, it's a principal use on a property, you've got to go through the conditional use process. And that's, and you say, okay, that's great, Scott. Why, why are you showing me this? What does that mean? Well, then, that means that you've got to submit an application, and as part of that application, there's approximately 20 supplemental information, things that you need to submit or, and/or conditions that you need to comply with. And we're going to go through those. We're going to talk what those are. But you can see on the boards, that's what you're seeing on the boards, is what's in the zoning code and what's required, is either part of, as part of the application and as part of the requirements that you have to comply with when you want to do this use. Okay? So here's some of the things that need to be submitted as part of the supplemental information. And I don't want to read all of these to you, but you can see here, looking at FAA review, identifying fire risk, talking about environmental review. And we're going to cover more of these in depth as part of this presentation, but we've got them on the boards as well. In addition, we've talked about, so these are things that get submitted with the application. There are also requirements that the project needs to comply with. So here's one is that the facility should not, structures would not exceed 35 feet in height. Structures need to be set back from the project boundary and rights of way at least 40 feet. And you can see that there's a variety of those on here. No outdoor storage. Construction starts within two years of approval. There's a number of them. There can be additional conditions added by the governing body, and they can be recommended by the planning commission in addition to what's in the zoning code right now. Does that making sense? Okay. So then, in terms of the process, I'm so sorry, this is blurry, but I'll, I'll walk you through it. So the first thing is that an application would come in. So someone's got a property, they want to do utility or commercial scale solar on the property. They would come in with an application, and as part of the application, it would have a notification area, it would have the addresses, mailing addresses of the owners of the properties. If it's in the unincorporated county, those within 1,000 feet. If it's within the city, it depends on the size of the application, the project site, and how far the notice would go out. Then what happens is that the planning department will take those addresses. If the application is complete, and we get the payment for it, and everything looks up to the snuff, then we'll send out the letters to those property owners within 1,000 feet, again, in the unincorporated county. We'll do the notice in the newspaper about the upcoming planning commission meeting where it would be scheduled, and then we will also, we'll put it on the agenda, we'll send out the notice, and then we'll, the sign would be posted on the property. So you see, has anyone seen those little red and white signs, development applications, got our phone number on it? Okay. Those are the kind of signs that would get put out. Then it would go to the planning commission. It would also possibly go to a citizen advisory board if it's in the unincorporated county. And then there's also the potential of, did everyone see that map of the urban growth areas over here? It's got the colors on it. It's like purple, orange, and, so if it's within the urban growth area of a city, then a city other than Wichita, then it will, they will have the opportunity to have their planning commission hear it and provide a recommendation on whether that land use change or conditional use should be approved. So it's advisory, but they've got the opportunity to do it. They don't have to do it, but they've got that opportunity. So then, after that, there's a 14-day protest period after the planning commission makes a decision or a recommendation on a conditional use. During that 14-day period, the state specifies that property owners within 1,000 feet in the unincorporated county or 200 feet within the city have the opportunity to file a protest with the clerk. So obviously, county clerk if it's in the county, city clerk if it's in the, in the city. And then what happens is it goes to the governing body, so the county commission, if it's unincorporated county, or city council if it's in the city of Wichita, and then they make a decision. Now, they can approve it, they can deny it, they can add additional conditions on it as part of the approval, or they've got a third option, which is they can send it back to the planning commission. There's, there's other options, but in general, those are the most common ones. Is that making sense so far? It's just a brief overview. If you've got additional questions afterwards, always find a staff person, we can, we can get you, walk you through it. Okay. So again, to emphasize here, oop, I'm getting a little too far away, to emphasize, if it's in an urban growth area for one of the cities other than Wichita, they've got the opportunity, and they get notified, and they've got the opportunity to have their planning commission hear it. Okay. All right. And just to emphasize again, the governing bodies, so the county commission, city council in Wichita, have the ability to add additional conditions in addition to the ones that are specified in the zoning code. In terms of background and timing, so how we kind of ended up in this place, just quick things to overview, is that in 2019, that's when the update with the conditions that are in the zoning code and the requirements in the zoning code were put in place, and that's also when the guidance was inserted into the comprehensive plan. So the materials, most materials that you're seeing are from the 2019 update. Then in, from 2021 thereabouts to about 2023, the planning department was working with stakeholders on an update to the comprehensive plan. And what it really dealt with was the size of the commercial or utility scale solar and how many of the conditions they should comply with or have to include as part of their submittal. That was never completed, so we have a draft. It's available online. You can go and see it. So this is just, I want to make sure that everyone knows there was a draft that was out there, but really, it was, it was focused on the size. So then, the moratorium was put in place this year. It ends on March 20th. That seems, that seems like a lot of time when you start to think about how far out March is, but as we go through this process, it's going to go very quickly, and so that's why we're excited to have you all here tonight. So as part of the moratorium, the planning commission and the planning department were tasked with reviewing the zoning code and also the comprehensive plan, and then bringing forward any proposed amendments to either of those two documents. Okay? So that's really the task. And again, sorry, this is blurry, but I'll walk you through the most important parts. You can find this online, more than happy to walk you through it later on. But where we are right now is we are working with, we're focusing on a lot of discussion with the MAPC, so the Wichita-Cedric County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. It's a joint planning commission for both the city of Wichita and Cedric County. We're working with them. They've got a subcommittee, which is the Advanced Plans Committee. It's made up of seven members, so half of the members of the planning commission, and we meet with them just about every two weeks, and we are providing them with information about solar. We're providing them with the feedback that we collect tonight. We'll be looking to them for insights about what meets the community needs. So we've had a couple meetings with them. We're here, next slide, we're here in the process. We're having the open house. We've got the online survey, so we're collecting community feedback. We're going to be documenting what happens. We'll have a summary report from the feedback that's collected tonight. We're going to get a summary report on the online survey. We're going to be providing that information to the Advanced Plans Committee of the Planning Commission, and we're going to be summarizing kind of what are some of the themes that are emerging out of that. And then, as we go through the process, we've got a few, we've got three meetings with the planning commission. We get into January, so this goes very quickly considering we've got the holidays. In January, we're going to have another opportunity for Cabs and cities and other entities to get a review if there's, and it's really if there are any changes that are recommended and what those changes would be if there are any. Then, though, we'll get a chance for feedback, take it back to advanced plans, take it to the full planning commission, and then later on to the county commission. So in this process, there are multiple opportunities for public feedback. This is not the only one. So many of these meetings, like advanced plans meetings, cab meetings, small city meetings, those will be opportunities for public comment as well. Okay? So multiple opportunities. Is this, is this explanation making sense so far? Okay. I see some people nodding. We'll, we'll keep going. Okay. So I am going to turn this over to Susan. We've kind of got quite a setup here, so it might take a little bit. So here you go.
Thank you.
All right. And here's the clicker. Do you want to just say next slide, or you want to go through it?
No, I can do it.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Susan Erlin-Wine, Director of Environmental Resources for Cedric County. And before I go into this, I'd just like to say, working on solar farms is like those medicine commercials you see on TV where the first 10 seconds tell you how great it is, and the next 20 seconds tell you about potential side effects. That's why we develop regulations. We do that to look at potential side effects for any project and determine what we would need to do to help correct that. So we require right now in our regulations an environmental assessment. That environmental assessment looks at habitat, wetlands, anything else that might be there, what's currently there, and is it going to be impacted by what we're going to do with a project? If it is impacted, then they need to do an environmental impact assessment, which goes into the scope, the baseline data, identify the impacts, are they significant, and how can you mitigate those impacts, and prepare an environmental impact assessment. What this means is, along the way, we'll be checking to make sure that the environment is protected on any project. To give you an idea, I know a lot of people have concerns about birds and solar farms. On the left side here, you can see a very large tower that's surrounded by mirrors. You'll see this sort of a solar array in Nevada. The mirrors are reflecting the solar energy back to a boiler that's in the center tower. What they discovered is when birds fly through that area, they're fried, and they find dead birds around on the ground because the temperature's over 1,000 degrees between those mirrors and the boiler. This is not allowed in our regulations. Our regulations, as Scott mentioned, are limited to 35-foot structure anywhere on the site. We're talking over a couple hundred-foot structure in a scenario like this. What we're looking at is the solar panel array on the right side that have panels that are fastened to the ground. The height may vary from the ground, and there's some panels track the sun, others don't. Depends on what the company wants to do. But those panels can have what they call a lake effect. If it's in a flight path of water fowl flying over an area, they'll see these panels shimmering, think it's a lake, dive down, hit the panels, and they could die. And they've had this happen across the nation. How you can see to that, that it doesn't happen, is anti-reflective coating on the solar panels so they're not reflecting. That can also help in any aircraft flying over an area, so there's no glare to the aircraft. And as you know, we have a lot of airports and aircraft in Cedric County. The current regulations require stormwater drainage in pre-construction, during construction, and after, when the solar panel's up, soil erosion and sediment control, and we have to do everything in accordance with Cedric County Conservation and what they recommend. And what they recommend is not what you think. It's not bare ground. During construction, you have detention ponds that can be built to keep the water on-site and not go off of the site. You want to keep soil erosion to a minimum, and you see on the right the black plastic that's called silt fencing. Any stormwater runoff would be caught by there. And my position, I am in charge of the regulations for stormwater, and we go out and inspect sites as they're being built. I have the ability to stop work if something's not being done correctly. So we want to make sure that everything's done right before we get to the finding point and finding companies. We want to work with them and be a good partner. After a solar plant's built, we will not allow bare soil. That's the photo on the left of farm field without some roots in the ground will allow the soil to wash off. It's a loss of good agriculture soil. We're requiring that pollinating plants be put on the solar farms. So you have the root system, allowing the water to soak in, you're not having runoff occur. And across the nation, there are called agrifoteag farms, where farming occurs on the site. You can see on the right sheep in a solar farm field, and on the left, you have plantings of farm produce. This is all allowed. So we'll work with companies to make sure there's no soil erosion. And the current regulations require no light source greater than one-foot candle directed off-site. The main thing here is dark sky compliant. Many people don't realize what that means, and so I have a photo of that. What you see on the left side is very bad lights emitting up into the sky and all around. Then you have bad, all the way to best on the right where all of the lights directed down, that's where you want it. If you're looking for, keep parking lots lit, keep burglars out of the area, why are you lighting the sky? There are cities that actually have this, and they're replacing all of their lights to dark sky compliant. The example there is from Utah, cities going totally to dark sky compliant. On the left, light is putting the light directly on the ground. The others are due to be replaced. You can see quite a difference between them. And how this affects the wildlife is many birds are affected by this migratory paths with all the lights, predator and prey competition. It is bad for many species of mammals to have it lit all day long. It's bad on nesting. So many communities are going to this overall, but we have it in our rules right now for any solar farm. Keep the lighting on-site and not off-site. So one last thing, our rules also contain social and economic impacts for the surrounding area. So that's really hasn't been discussed a lot, but that is in our regulations right now. What impacts will it have on the surrounding area and the environment around the area? But thank you. Now I'm going to hand it over to Lynn to talk about transportation. Can't walk too far away. That affects the...
Yeah, it's kind of fixed in that area. Let's see if I can...
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Lynn Packer. I, I serve as the county engineer and director of public works for Cedric County. The reason why I'm up here is to talk about the transportation component. As you've heard from Susan, we have regulations that are already in place. We are not the first to go through utility solar. We've learned from others and what they've gone through, and I think Susan was pretty clear about how we've already adopted regulations that are current. The aspect of transportation is not, what we're talking about is not regarding the transportation of the electricity from one place to the other, but actually, our roads, our sightlines, our offsets, our regulations actually do get into that component of it. They're required to be 40 feet from the edge of their platted property or from the right way, from their right-of-way line. They are required to maintain appropriate site distances and make sure that they have no encumbrances within the clear, what we call the clear zone of the road. What we're looking at, and what you see up there is exactly what you're going to see back there on the transportation panel. The idea is, that's the current regulation. We're looking for comments on things on all our panels as far as what have we missed, what other things do we need to take into consideration. We think we have a great first take on what the regulations need to cover, all the way in including the haul roads, construction routes, permitting, but we're looking for additional comments. And then, so coming up right now, we're going to have Philip come up and talk about the visual and aesthetics. You know, the regulations actually have gone and talked about those items as well.
Well, good evening, everybody. I promise I didn't break it. My name is Philip Zievenbergen. I'm the current plans division manager for the Wichita-Cedric County Planning Department. I'm going to take you through some of the visuals and aesthetics. You're going to find that some of this is repeated. Susan mentioned several things related to the heights of the structure. Lynn talked about several of the setbacks for the structures themselves, so I'll do my best not to try to just always repeat things, but a lot of these are not only designed to help protect the environment and help assist in not encumbering our transportation throughout the county, but they're also there to mitigate possible visual impacts on surrounding properties and property owners and what they see out their front door, out their back porch each and every day if a utility solar array were to be installed. So the very first one, as we mentioned before, any structure on the site, like the solar array itself, is limited to 35 feet in height. That's the standard height designation for residential zoning throughout the entire county, so it's not exceeding what a standard height would be for any type of structure within standard residential zoning throughout the county. You'll make notice that it doesn't apply to transmission lines or substation facilities. Obviously, those will likely be taller, and most of those are probably existing, or they might have to install some new facilities in order to connect into existing substations or transmission lines. But in terms of the solar arrays themselves, they are limited to that 35 feet. The next, Lynn just talked about the setbacks. Minimum setback from the platted property line or the right-of-way line is 40 feet. There's a caveat to that sentence to say, additional setback may be required. So through the review process, not just with the zoning process, but even in the permitting process, as they're looking at possible impacts to the transportation network, where it's located in relation to specific roads, when you think of like the difference between 53rd Street or 37th Street up north. The county may require the panels to be set back farther because they may have want additional space if that road ever would need to be widened in the future to accommodate future growth and future traffic. So 40 feet is the minimum, could be considered more based on other factors to review. The next point is that it would have to be enclosed by an eight-foot-tall, essentially, security fence. I think this is in the best interest of not only the company, they want to make sure that the facility is secure, but also in the best interest of those who are around to ensure that, you know, crime isn't coming into the area, that the, that the property is secure, and nothing is happening on-site, that we, that be detrimental to the neighbors, kids in the area, or things like that. So perimeter fence, minimum eight feet in height. We talk about on-site communication lines. There's not a laser on this. So obviously, we're trying to transmit electricity. Electricity comes through lines. The power poles, the substation poles, the transmission lines have to be either in public right-of-way, so along the street or the road, or through designated easements throughout the site. Most of those are likely going to be already existing. Internal wires to connect the arrays to each other, to connect the arrays to any type of other facility on the site before it gets to the substation all have to be underground, except if there's certain mitigating factors that you'll see on the bottom of this, and this board's over here, if you're curious, if you're not able to see these words in the back. There would have to be some sort of factor like underground pipelines or other things that would prohibit them from putting those lines underground, and they would have to prove that to us before they would be able to make them aerial lines. But the standard would be, all of those internal lines have to be underground to minimize as much things being in the air and the visual clutter of all of these electric lines going throughout the property. We want them to be underground as much as possible. Signage. Signs can be cluttered. We have a sign code. Cedric County has a sign code to minimize visual impacts and sign clutter in Cedric County. So there shall be no signage for solar arrays with the exception of safety, emergency contact sign, warning signs, directional signs, or project identification. The Cedric County, Cedric County sign code has sign regulations per zoning type. There's different types of zoning within the county, and any sign that would be allowed by these regulations have to follow the sizing and height and other requirements of the Cedric County sign code. So this already limits the amount of signs they can have or what types of sign they can have. There's the next layer of signage to say, it can't be above and beyond what the sign code would allow for any type of commercial business or any type of sign that you already are allowed to have in the county anyway. When it comes to the location of them, the way that this is currently written essentially wants to maximize the, the type of terrain that would have the, the least amount of impact. There are certain parts of the county that have less hills than others, and obviously, when it comes to putting an array in something, you're going to maximize the ability to have... to have an array, if you have flatter ground, you're moving less dirt. You're actually making less of an impact into the area. And so that middle paragraph essentially wants to look at that. That's not a regulation to say you have to put it over here. We just want to minimize the impact by maximizing areas where there's existing vegetation along property lines to provide additional visual screening or even property that would have the least impact in order for something to be constructed. You'll note at the bottom sentence that says landscaping and/or screening may be required to help screen the solar array. What that means is through the conditional use process, when it's going through the public hearing process, when we're looking at that specific site in relation to what's around it, what properties are around it, who's living around it, how close is the nearest house? How close is, fill in the blank? There is the opportunity for the planning commission and ultimately the city, Wichita City Council, if it's in the city, or the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners to require them to provide solid screening, which would be like a fence or a wall. That's what we mean by screening, and/or landscaping to help break up the visual impact depending on where it's at and whether or not it's appropriate. So to say that they just have to put a chain-link fence around the property, that would be the minimum, but wouldn't necessarily be fair to say there wouldn't necessarily be required to be something additional should it be determined to be reasonable that we should be screening this visual impact based on the surrounding properties surrounding it in certain areas. And finally, we actually just covered this. Susan did an excellent job regarding the lighting, so I'm not going to spend too much time on that. Depending on other regulations that they have to follow with other local, state, or federal entities, we can determine what type of lighting they would have to provide. But when it comes to like security lighting, lighting throughout the project, those lights are restricted to no greater than 15 feet in height. And Susan had the fantastic visual of what that light has to look like. Directed downwards, I just lost the term, I apologize, but dark night compliant, dark sky compliant. So we're minimizing the visual impact of light sources. If they have light sources is the key word. If they have light sources, what those light sources can be, where they can be, how tall they can be, and how much light they can produce. So again, she delved into a lot of those details and I'm not going to necessarily repeat it. Scott, are you next?
So what we'll do is we'll turn it over for questions and comments at this point. Now, I realize that we've gone to 6:30, so what we will do is we will keep the mics and I will definitely stay here and we'll have some staff here until 7:30. That's what I'm going to commit to doing to make sure that we receive the comments because you all have taken the time to come out. But what I want to emphasize is that you have additional comments that you want to share. Please take the survey. Please fill out the comment cards. Please visit the boards. We'll probably start picking up the boards close to around 7:00. But we're here and this is your time now for questions and comments. So if you would, please go ahead and make a line over by the microphone for those who want to speak. And we're going to try and bring up a timer for three minutes just to remind folks and let folks know where they are in terms of time. And we just ask that everyone try and limit their comments to three minutes or less so that we can be respectful of everyone. And if you want to provide more comments, we can certainly take those via email or you can send them in to us at any time. So with that, I'm going to ask Paul to come up and operate the timer and then we'll go ahead and we'll turn it over to you. So yes, sir, if you want to start first?
Hello, my name is Holger Meier and I noticed there are two goals listed in one of the poster boards, nowhere does it mention climate change. So Anna Lee is an intern with CNN Opinion and in a piece published on CNN.com last Saturday, she explains that she's not planning to have children, stating my main concern is climate change. She links to a study in the Lancet and thus appear reviewed research showing that majority of Gen Z'ers and millennials share her concern, many to the degree of joining her and not planning to have children. I'm a professor of physics at Bridgetta State University where I teach students in that age group and I know of people who decided not to have children mainly due to concerns about climate change right here in Sedgwick County. Climate scientists have warned about the consequences of climate change by the public before at least since Michael Manton testified before Congress in 1988 and have chronicled the losses climate change has caused over the decades with attribution science becoming more and more accurate. 2023 is when they hear when most Americans witness the impact of climate change firsthand. The fifth National Climate Assessment, a congressionally mandated report published this month shows that drought and flooding, wildfires and other disasters impact most of us, even areas that so far have been less severely directly impacted such as Sedgwick County, pay for the economic cost of climate change that already amounts to billions of dollars each year just in the U.S. alone. The first hurdle in solving the problem is the need to recognize that the problem exists and while it has taken us collective lifelong, as I said, should have. There is no overwhelming consent in the general public, not just among climate scientists, that climate change is a problem and that the massive immediate expansion of renewable energy and rapid and complete phase-out of fossil fuel are the solution and are absolutely necessary. So rapid expansion of renewable energy, that needs to be one of the goals. That is my point. The second hurdle is to implementing a solution is cost. And I will submit written testimony showing that cost is coming down. In many places, already renewable energy is the cheapest form of energy. So we need to support and attract solar farms, rooftop solar and solar farms, not just for climate change mitigation, but also for economic reasons. Storage is needed for solar farms eventually and there's good news with sodium-ion batteries as well. I can't, don't have time to go into the details. But suffice it to say that batteries that don't rely on mined materials and are much more environmentally friendly have become available. This is here, solar panels using materials that are as common as sand on the beach because that's what it is. Just, so please, the last hurdle is regulations. So I implore you, just cut down on the regulations to a sensible minimum so that people like Anna Lee can remain optimistic about their future.
Thank you. And always feel free to email us with additional comments. Thank you. Next?
I just would like to say a couple of things about my personal interest in solar. I have three kids. My wife and I have three boys who are between the age of six and 12. And they're actually here tonight. They're in the back. But personally, in our household, we've, we're interested in, I mean, obviously, the long-term future of humanity being on this planet for the next thousand years, hopefully longer, you know? And so a couple of things I wanted to mention. In about, so like I lived in Tucson. We lived in Tucson before moving here. And in about the year 2005 or so, I remember having a conversation with a coworker saying, "Hey, it's really hot here. There's a lot of sun. Why don't we put solar panels over the parking lots and give people some shade for their cars?" And maybe even sidewalks in a couple of places where it's just very, the weather beats down on people. And then about 10 years later, that happened. And that's actually going on in Tucson. They have some school buildings, some school, not, sorry, playgrounds actually have solar panels over their playgrounds so kids have a place to stand in the shade when they're out at recess. And cars can get extremely hot, even in Kansas in the summertime. And just simply putting a solar carport, putting solar in your carport is like, it's a no-brainer to me. Why not do that? And so I want, personally, I would like to keep solar as an option. I don't want to, I can't speak for the complexities of the large-scale arrays and what they'll do for, you know, damage or visible, you know, disruption or whatever. But I do think that I want to keep that option open for us to have solar in our homes, maybe our churches, our parking lots in the future. And I think that it's, we've begun outfitting our home for electric. Gas is cheaper right now, but if we can have, we just got a, I'm sorry, I've got 38 seconds left. If we can have, you know, a heat pump, water heater that consumes about the same price as gas, then that's, that's going to allow us to have solar. Okay, so that's why, that's my interest right now.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. So we're taking notes. We're also recording, so we'll put this into the report from the open house. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you for having this forum. My name is Mary Ann Harmon and I want to applaud the regulations that you've put in place already. There is a new technology that will totally eliminate glare and I think we should require that for the solar panels here. I'm happy that you have already addressed storm runoff and, but I am concerned that perhaps Kansas is over incentivizing. I've heard stories that there are companies that are coming here, international companies that are coming here because there's a lot more money to be had from the government. I'm also concerned about decommissioning. We want to make sure that the regulations are going to require a plan in place for decommissioning that cannot be walked away from. I'd also like to see that the panels are responsibly sourced. Not only the panels themselves, but the materials that are used to build these panels. They need to be not using slave labor, not hurting the environment irresponsibly. And I also applied you for the multiple uses of the land that you're requiring. Pollinators are so important. These parcels can also be used for agriculture and I'm really happy about requiring that. I've spoken to some people here who are concerned about a project that is under consideration and they're concerned about the water table. So I want to make sure that we have regulations in place that aren't going to allow the infrastructure that is built for these solar panels to be mounted, that it's not going to contaminate the water. Zinc in particular was mentioned, but I'm sure there's a multitude of ways that the, that the water that is under these solar panels can be contaminated, not by the solar panels themselves, but by the poles. And I'd also like to see quarterly inspections for damage to the panels so that, because there are concerns from certain entities. And then I'd also like to echo what some other people said. Would like to see better utilization of rooftops. We ought to be building these panel farms on, in industrial complexes on warehouse roofs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just a real quick clarification, just so you know, is there's the opportunity for multiple uses, so like agrarian uses underneath the panels. It's not necessarily a requirement. So just be aware of that. There is the opportunity and that could be part of the discussion about a project, a particular project. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Stan Burkamp and I'm actually responsible for the solar panels you mentioned at Mays High School. Yeah, so that was, yeah, good to see you. Okay. So I've taught at Mays High School for 30 years. I've lived in Sedgwick County my entire life, except for two and a half years. I served in the United States Peace Corps when I was in Africa. And so I also farm in the summers and I understand there's a vast array of concerns. But when I look at the physics, because ironically today I gave a speech to my physics classes about the needs of energy and I said, "Here's how your generation is going to be defined." My father's generation saw a change in transportation. My dad was born in a farm out by Cheney Lake. By the time he died in 96, he saw man walk on the moon. I remember in fourth grade, I was excited when we had a push-button phone, like then he had one in Cheney, Kansas. We ran home to see that. And now I tell my kids, "You have access to more information on your phones than any other generation has ever had." I said, "But what's going," and I told my kids, I said, "What's going to define your generation is how do you generate electricity?" And so my concern is that, if you've never heard this term, we're turning into a nation of NIMBYs, not in my backyard. So everybody wants cheap electricity. They want growth. They want industrial parks. They want housing developments. Where, my question is, everybody says what they don't want. Where do you want that, where do you want that electricity to be generated? Nobody wants wind. You don't want, you don't want coal, or excuse me, coal, nuclear power plants? Probably not. So from my perspective, and I could give you a whole hour-long lecture in terms of physics and transmission lines, the advantage of certain projects that have been proposed is that it's right beside an existing power grid. It ties into it. So everybody says, "Well, let's ship that out further out. Let's build wind farms further out." That's great, but then you got to build the transmission lines. You have to build the infrastructure. Who's going to pay for that? And that's going to become an added cost. Is any source of electricity perfect? No. But from my perspective and from what I've studied, and I've raised over $300,000 in six years, people are supportive of solar. I explain to my kids, "You generate the electricity right here and at the end of any electricity story, I have to be able to make toast." So the question is, how do I make my toast? Do I generate it from nuclear, generate it from coal? And I say, "Hey, I can generate that electricity right there. It dumps onto the grid, Mr. Burkamp makes toast." And they go, "Wow, that makes sense." And I said, "Yes, it does." And so if you want to talk about growth, you have to have kids and younger generations that are willing to stay here. And from my experience, kids are very willing and want to embrace this idea of renewable energies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kent Rowe. I'm with the Kansas Sierra Club and we have a lot of things we could say about the future of electricity, how it is democratized, how it can be distributed over the population, how we all can make a living off of generating electricity as customer generators. This particular project, I would like to see it more democratized, but this is more centralized. We don't have the luxury of decentralization because we and our climate are at a tipping point. I was with the United States Air Force for many years. I have, during my tenure, I saw the transition of U.S. Army and Air Force bases, defense bases to renewable energies. These are secure energies, a lot more secure than centralized systems. But they were able to make this transition and are going full-on right now as we speak with generation and storage. My question to the panel is, the, in a statement, "Solar Energy Industries Association rates Kansas as number 46 in solar installations presently." Why is that when Kansas is really rated number five in its potential to generate solar? The question is, how does a Sedgwick County uniform zode code for commercial solar installations compare with those in other states and other counties? Are they more stringent? Are they less stringent or are they? And how did they originate? How did you get and obtain these kinds of regulations? So with that, I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. And thank you for the question. Actually, we have a station right next to you with the handout there. And we've only got four or five copies, so we don't have a whole bunch. But it's research that we've done in how other local governments are regulating solar, utility and commercial-scale solar. And then the individual who put a lot of that research together is Mary Hunt, who's up along the wall there. Hi, Mary. So if you've got questions about it, please chat with her. That'd be great. Thank you.
I'm not really an elegant speaker, so I'm going to make it real short and simple. We've got areas that are flat. 35 feet is kind of tall. And when we do have a thunderstorm, we, with these large metal farms are we, with these large metal farms out there, are we gonna attract some more frequent lightning strikes? My other one's about, everyone knows about plants and photosynthesis, so by taking and turning these metal fields, are we removing the vegetation that's going to take the carbon dioxide and make oxygen for us to breathe and survive out of the system, the ecosystem? And lastly, who's gonna pay when we finally figure out this wasn't a great idea, and that we're developing some real problems? Are our future taxpayers gonna get tied up with some more national debt in fixing this stuff? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And then, sir, you made, sir, you made questions, you got questions, but I think they were also kind of phrased as statements. Are you looking for answers, or, okay, thank you for sharing. Yes, sir?
Uh, I'd like to just make a, read a statement here. My name is Leroy Bosch, I'm a concerned citizen in the rural Mays-Colwich area. I believe the greatest risk factor relating to utility-scale solar developments is our water. Currently, utility-scale development companies have proposed projects in Reno and Sedgwick Counties that have the potential to impact the entire water supply for the city of Wichita. First, a proposed project to develop 2,000-plus acres of solar, three to five miles north of Cheney Lake, is directly in the lake drainage basin. Reno County currently has a moratorium on solar until December to get regulations in place. After that, who knows what? But I hope Sedgwick County will express their interest in this proposed development, track it closely, and/or intervene if necessary. Cheney Lake represents 60% of Wichita's water. Second, a proposed project in the Mays-Colwich area is directly over the aquifer from which you and I pull water. The 1,200 to 1,300 acres will have thousands of zinc-coated pilings driven into the aquifer at depths only known by the developer. Groundwater in this area is quite shallow, so pilings will perforate the aquifer. Contact with the Equus Bed Groundwater Management District II in April yielded, "Well, we'll look into it, and, uh, we hope that the necessary permits were obtained in test pilings and core drillings, and that the core drillings were plugged properly. Attempts to follow up were met with no response. Water is our most precious, precious resource, we have and should be given the utmost consideration and protection. These solar contracts in this area are 35 years with a 35-year renewal option, that's up to 70 years, which means most of us in this room will be dead if utility solar is developed in the future. If Mother Nature acts as in the past, this leaves our children and grandchildren living with the potential for a disaster. We're subject to high winds, 100-plus recorded in the Colwich area, massive hailstorms, and don't forget tornadoes and lightning. These weather phenomena will be getting worse if the climate is changing as they currently predict. Much is unknown about long-term, uh, toxicity, solar panels, or supporting restructures and that, lead, cadmium, zinc, but Douglas County is currently reviewing theirs because of potential zinc camp contamination. Uh, land use density and Harvey, land use population and water reasons Harvey County rejected it. All are applicable to Sedgwick County, but in a greater, uh, proportion. So I encourage anyone having to do with Sedgwick County planning, water supply, and governance to, in general, to stop utility and to have independent studies, not developer spin, to look at this. Any regulations that should be put in place can be reversed, so I urge you a total ban on it until such research can be completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Fields, and I'm a lifelong resident of Sedgwick County. First, I'd like to state, I'm not against solar energy. Um, I think we all are in agreement that we have to look at renewable energies for our future. Um, I'm very proud of the solar initiative at Mays High School. Stan Burkamp has done an excellent job, uh, in securing this for the use of Mays High School and for educational purposes, and this is what we need, the education of our kids. He's taught my two daughters and is currently teaching my grandson, so he's kind of a rock star in our family. I am concerned about the future growth of the Mays and Colwich corridor, or for that matter, if it would be Hayesville and Derby corridor. I feel that restrictions and revised regulations are needed to ensure the development of these areas. Size, configuration, and placement of a massive solar utility farm can and should be placed outside of these future growth areas to protect the current residents and the future generation of Sedgwick County residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liam Collins, uh, I'm a resident of Colwich with my wife and three kids, and thanks for this opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I wanted to start out by saying, I think we're all in agreement, I think probably every single one of us in this room, that we should care for our environment, uh, whether we see that as a duty to God, or to the future of humanity, or to Mother Earth, you know? That's something we're all here for. But I'd like to add another principle, which is the principle of subsidiarity, some may have heard of it. The idea is basically that local things should be dealt with on a local level, broader things should be dealt with on a broader level, and, uh, you know, the problem of, of global change, or even national climate change, is a, a big problem. You might say it's above our pay grade, in a certain sense. What I think we really can do is think about our environment and what makes sense for us. Um, I spent three years, uh, working as a civilian aerospace engineer at a naval base out in California, near where they invested heavily in both wind and solar, and I would argue that, in some ways, the effect on the local environment there was not entirely positive, certainly aesthetically, at least, um, if not in terms of things like growth, water, et cetera. So, um, it seems to me that what we really ought to do in considering this decision, this isn't a selfish thing, it's not about, "I only care about our region," the point is, what we know about and what we can take good care of is our region. So, and the, the broader things need to be thought about at a broader level. So, we need to think about, what are the motivations for us to do this? What are the, the risks for us to do this? And to my understanding of the current situation, um, you know, uh, the projects that I've heard of that are being proposed don't give power to us, they don't seem like they really financially reward us in a significant enough way, they potentially impede, um, development, they're potentially aesthetically off-putting, so I see a lot of cons in, in that sense, it seems to me that we should be careful to address those things and think about what makes sense for us. Again, not, not in a spirit of selfishness, but in, in the sense that if everyone does their part to take care of their area, and to, to pay attention to what's in their purview, we'll, we'll be better off, in general, so, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Mullin Colwich, I'm gonna put a switch on you here, Scott. Uh, on your flow chart, I wanted a little bit of a clarification, if you could.
Yes, sir.
Uh, when will the cities get to see your first draft of the revisions, if any?
You know, um, the process is, we've mapped it out in a kind of a step-by-step process. Um, we believe that, we're hoping, uh, we're aiming for, is probably the better way to say it, we're aiming for having, uh, draft, uh, i- if there are changes, to have a, a concept and a draft of what those changes would be sometime in January, so that we'd have the opportunity to get feedback and input on those, because really, we're shooting for, uh, to get it to the county commission in March, so if we go backwards from that planning commission, then in, uh, February, which gives us January to collect some of the input. So, so that's what we've got lined up right now, the schedule, um, can adjust, uh, we'll, we'll just have to see how the process goes, but that's what we've got so far.
So what you're saying, that you're, you're gonna try to have everything to a point to where the various districts, the various boards will have a chance to review it, and the citizens can have a chance to, uh, review what's on the books at that time?
Yeah, that's correct, and I would encourage everyone, too, um, if you wanna see kinda how the process is progressing, we do, uh, record the MAPC Advanced Plans meetings, you can always attend them in person, but we do record them, so if you're not able to make it during the day, you can watch those videos, you can always, uh, submit comments to us in the planning department, and we can share those with the committee members.
On, on the flow chart, too, you have this, the Sedgwick County Association of Cities, who is that, what is that?
Yes, sir, that's, uh, that's an association, uh, of the cities in Sedgwick County, uh, they participate in that, I believe they've got, uh, regular meetings, uh, that happen, and it's just an opportunity for elected officials and, uh, leaders of the administrations to get together and just talk about issues that are going on in the cities.
Then what is the Sedgwick County cities, is that where the...
So, um, that would be just individual cities, so if there are particular, uh, individual cities that would like to receive a presentation, uh, we'd be more than happy to work with them on scheduling a time when staff could go out and provide that presentation to them and get their feedback.
And you're gonna try to get all that accomplished in the January timeframe?
We're gonna aim for it.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Megan Albert, and my family lives in farms in Sedgwick County. I know you said this isn't about one particular project, but I'm gonna speak on one since it's what I'm familiar with. Um, we have decided to participate in the Chisholm Trail Solar Farm Project, um, with Invenergy, and I believe that solar can be a valuable part of our family's farming operation. Believe the decision to participate in a solar project should be left to each landowner and family in our county, county, and I would encourage the county to refrain from overregulation. Um, that's something that could trump private property rights in the name of appeasing those who say, "Not in my backyard." Um, the economic benefits of a solar project do not lie solely with the farmers who are participating in the project, um, but our Sedgwick County schools will receive millions of dollars of tax revenue from projects like these, um, hundreds of jobs will be created to construct it, long-term maintenance and operation jobs will ensure the continued operation of these projects once constructed. I believe solar is both compatible with agriculture and with commerce, and I am worried that any overregulation of solar projects would cause delays that run the risk of regulating these projects out of existence. Um, we do support reasonable regulations that provide a framework for, with how these projects should go, um, but I caution you to not create delays and regulations that would eliminate these projects off the map.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Walt Chapel. So glad you're holding this, uh, get-together for folks to come together and find out, all right, what are the pros and cons of something that is simple, where the sun comes down, photons hit a collector, and it produces electricity. Now, this has been around since the 1950s, it's not new technology, but I'm recalling what happened when the automobile came out. That was about 100 years ago, and a lot of people came together like this, and they said, "Well, gosh, you know, those things make a hell of a lot of noise, they're gonna scare our, our horses, we, we gotta have a flare, you gotta shoot a flare off if you're gonna come down our road, and by golly, if you, if you get too close to our horses, we want you to take your, your car over here that's making all this noise, and, and put it in the ditch, and then cover it with a tarp." Now, they actually came up with regulations like that, right? In the case of coal, we were all burning firewood in our fireplaces, that's how we kept warm for hundreds, thousands of years, right? Burn wood. Well, coal came around, and we thought, "Well, gosh, that's a kind of a neat thing, but you can't see the flame." And they wanted to say, "We want to object to having coal stoves in our homes, well, just too much of a problem." Okay, so what I'm getting at is that we can come up with all kinds of boogeymen. We can claim this, we can claim that, turns out, these pylons, they stick down to the ground, many of those are in concrete, they're not gonna leak into the aquifer. We don't need to worry about birds, because those collectors have a coating on them to keep them from being reflective. A lot of these issues we can deal with through good engineering and good compassion, understanding of what the issues really are, rather than coming up with something out of the air and thinking, "Oh, my God, we shouldn't do that here." This company that's coming to Kansas wants to be involved with our area, the Chisholm Trail Project. That company has produced projects of 6,000 megawatts, all over the world, not only here in Midwest, but all across the United States and other countries. So I invite you to think through this issue, don't come up with all kinds of additional regulations to say, "No, we can't do it because of this or that." There are lots of naysayers over the years, I was thinking back to my own experience at Michigan State University, when I was a student there, they said, "Well, you shouldn't learn about, uh, computers, 'cause that's just a fad, you know, it's gonna go away." Well, how right was that? We have a choice, we have a future for our kids, our grandkids, that we've got to protect. If we don't start making good decisions now, they're not gonna have a planet to exist on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Charles Becker, and I live on 55th and, and 103rd, and I have lived on this farm for 81 years, it's three years, three generations that have lived on this farm. One of the concerns that I have is the depopulation of the area in regard to our private school system that we have at Shulte, and that will eliminate a lot of kids that would come to our school, and that would create a problem as far as maintaining our school system. So, and that would also affect Hayesville and Clearwater. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide a comment, or has questions they'd like to share? Well, if not, I wanna say, oh, one more? Okay. I feel like I should do an, like an auction, going once, going tw- okay.
Thank you, guys, for having us. Honestly, I don't know very deeply about everything, but I just moved back from California. There's solar farms and wind farms. They're ugly, they're huge, and honestly, I don't believe the people who made them, who say they know what's gonna happen to those communities. I, I, I just, I don't know if it's been, I don't know if you can know that. That's all I got to say, it's really simple, I don't want those farms here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right, well, thank you, everyone, thank you so much for being here. As always, if you have comments, uh, that you think about tonight, feel free to email them in, uh, please take the survey, and once again, thank you very much.